Okay, we should move that any second by Bob, any discussion? All in favor? Great, so now why don't we open the public hearing, so I'll entertain a motion to open the public. Motion by Elaine and seconded by Tom on any discussion? All in favor? Okay, the public hearing is now open, so anyone would like to share their thoughts on the proposed budget? Please come up to the front. Anyone in Zoom with?
Well, Stacy Grant.
This is, this is the only opportunity, so.
Another five seconds. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make.
So I should move by Bob, seconded by Elaine, any discussion? Okay, well, why don't we go through each department and if there's any last questions from committee members, then if not, we will pass them department by department. So why don't we start going in this order, so Department ten ten and the emergency. I'm using, yeah, they're all the same numbers.
Well, and if they're not, we'll find out. I make a motion that we accept one hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars for the budget amount twenty twenty-three for Department ten ten emergency management.
Motion moved by Bob, seconded by Elaine, any discussion?
I have a general question.
Yeah, please.
Um, can you tell me how much the commissioners have in their surplus or non-designated accounts?
No, it's the end of the year then. And you have a copy, it was provided to you, I think at the last meeting, certainly not this one, I don't think. And it's in our reserve accounts.
Not the reserves, I'm not talking about the reserve.
We won't know what we have for any surplus until.
Can be.
And you have the budget figures in front of you here today, at this point, we're looking pretty good, I think we're at about seventy-four, seventy-five. Expendits thus far, so.
Yes, when I asked the question previously, at fire meeting, it was my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the commissioners had about seven hundred thousand in undesigned funds that they could use at their will without budget, without budget committee approval.
No, any money that is undesigned, we show up at the end of the year, anything prior to that, we put in our reserves. Those designated reserves.
Okay, and what are those designated reserves?
I you have the reserve machine options, I don't want to put you on the spot, Chris.
Oh, the reserves are in there.
So I guess my follow-up question is, how do you determine how the reserves are found?
I can provide you each reserve account has a designated title and how it can be extended. There's specific ones that have to be more specific.
Alright, I'm ready to move on.
Any further discussions? Okay, not all, call my hope.
I.
I, Elaine.
I.
Tom.
Yes.
I know it is. But approved for one hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars.
Seven years. One half. Seven.
Let's move on to Department ten fifteen, this is the attorney's office. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that Department ten fifteen that we approve the budget request of two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for fiscal twenty. Full year.
One second.
Move by Bob, seconded by Elaine, any discussion? Any? Your thoughts?
I'm gonna miss you when you're gone.
Oh.
Um, I have no questions.
Okay. See none? Call for a vote, thank.
I.
I.
Elaine.
I.
Tom. Linda.
Hi.
Yes.
And I go yes. Okay, moving along to Department ten twenty, county.
I made a motion that we have three hundred and twenty-two thousand fifty-one dollars for account ten twenty for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion by Elaine, seconded by Penny, any discussion? Say none, Penny, how do you go?
I.
Hi.
Hi.
I don't want to do a motion on.
That's mine.
Alright, moving on to Department ten twenty-five, the finance office.
I make a motion that we approve the budget at eighty-two thousand fifty-one dollars for Office ten twenty-five, the finance office for twenty twenty-three.
Motion moved by Bob, seconded by Elaine, any discussion? Any none, Penny, have you go?
I.
Hi.
Hi.
Moving on to Department ten thirty, facilities management.
Make motion to approve the budget for Department ten thirty, facility management, the amount of three hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Seconded.
By Danny, seconded by Elaine, any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Neil, I think. Did you, as we suggested at the last meeting, have you had an opportunity to look into what it would take for solar?
I did, I had established a relationship with Revision Energy back, I think it was twenty nineteen, and I got ahold of, his name Andrew Barrow, and he's one of the folks out there and came out to the site survey, we looked at the the EMA Sheriff's Office for potentially putting some solar panels on that roof, and then we went out to the garden site and looked around out there for maybe like a ground mounted site out there, so they're working up a proposal and hope to have that at the next commissioner meeting that we can present that with the commission, so. It was kind of cool that even though we're a government entity, there was still some rebates that federal rebates that were available to government entities for that type of project, which was thirty percent of the total project, so that's pretty, pretty deep, you know, find that, that there was money available to help out with that, so. Yeah, I'm moving forward.
And I was just wondering, do you, do you have a rough percentage of the energy that that solar would hopefully offset?
Well, we were looking at trying to reach a hundred percent, but given the, I guess it would depend on the cost of the system and payback time as to where we'd be at, I would think we could shoot for seventy percent somewhere in that range, and that would be a realistic number, so.
Good.
James, can I say something?
Yeah, please.
I mean, Keith and I have been talking and have been talking to some other people, we have on an agenda to form an energy committee that work for this, and I think we'll kind of advertise for the webpage or something, and people send in the names, we work with that committee, so someone get all the information that is out there to use go there. But six minds are better than one, so.
I have a list of the reserve accounts that we have, I didn't make enough copies for everybody, but they're coming, there's some, okay, hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you.
And there's some more copies, please, I just wanted to bring some in right away.
Alright, any further discussion? We have a motion on the table to pass the ten thirty, the fully managed budget. Seeing no more questions, off the vote, thank.
I.
I.
Okay, and I will guess, motion passed. Moving right along, Department ten thirty-five, information technology.
Make a motion to approve the Department ten thirty-five of nation technology, eight-six thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars.
I'll second him.
Motion moved by Tammy, seconded by Bob. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote.
I.
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 Yes.
I guess. Motion passed. Yeah, first. Okay, let's move on. So Department ten sixty-five, registry of deeds.
I'll make a motion that we apply account ten sixty-five for two hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy dollars for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-three.
Motion moved by Elaine, seconded by Tom, any discussion? Seeing none, off the vote, Penny.
I.
Bye, Elaine.
I.
Tom. I go yes, motion passes. Alright, moving along to Department ten seventy, probate court.
Make a motion that we accept the budget of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand three hundred and ninety dollars for Department ten seventy probate court for twenty twenty-three.
One second.
Motion moved by Bob, seconded by Elaine, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, thank.
I.
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 Tom.
Linda.
I.
Yes. I go yes, motion passes. Moving along to Department ten seventy-five, Sheriff's Office.
Make a motion that we take account number ten seventy-five, so two million three hundred and nine dollars and not in thirty, yeah, three-nine thousand and twenty dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-three for the sheriff's.
Sorry, can you say that number one more time, just for clarity?
Two million three hundred and nine thousand twenty dollars.
Second, motion moved by Elaine, seconded by Tom, any discussion? Yeah.
So for the record, I did bring Matt his donut when we did the truck take back last Saturday, and it was a good donut, wasn't it, Matt? It was a Weaver's.
You just stopped there.
You didn't make it for it, no. Um, but I did get an answer to my question I had about the resource across America. Do you want to talk about it, Matt, so I don't have to bring up my phone?
Sure, I can give you a brief synopsis. The question in summation was how much money did we spend on resource across America? And between the hotel and the fuel which we split in the association, it was approximately five hundred dollars, they were round numbers, that's what Penny asked me to work with, the fluctuation of fuel costs, and I projected above two hundred and fifty this year, because we're not sending a vehicle this year, we're actually going to be driving some of their vehicles, they just wanted the, they're trying to keep the convoy a little bit smaller when they get into some, some of the other areas, so the, there was no overtime expenditure, the guys that we choose send, they are on their they, they get their regular pay when they go, but it's up to the association to cover those shifts, the, the, any vacant shift, so we don't, we don't sacrifice any coverage for it, and really just from a working standpoint, whatever, having been something did happen to them, or some, you know, accidents happen, that, like, there is a nexus between the office and them. Like, excuse.
And I do have one more question, are we still spending taxpayer dollars on non-law enforcement memberships?
Yes, we are.
Can you tell me what those are for whom and how much?
Well, I don't have an exact list right here in front of me on top of my memory, but I know one of them is the one you questioned last year, which was the rotary dude, the chief.
In my understanding, it was three separate rotary clubs.
No, it's just the one in Belfast, in my understanding.
Yeah, it's, it's the the Belfast Rotary Club, as a department, we also belong to the Belfast Chamber, so it's, you know, we do belong to such professional organizations, part of community involvement.
Is there a membership due for the Chamber of Commerce?
There is, and I don't know what the number is. So it's, it's a Belfast Chamber, there's, there's a special government at the, which I think is reduced rate from a private business, I, I just, I don't recall the number.
No, and the, the reason I ask about the number of rotary memberships is I know each, each one is about seventy dollars annually, and the figure I got from Karen last year was two-ten, which, you know, rings in my head, but that was the three.
Well, that would be easy, Matt, yeah, I don't, I, I don't know that there's any any other specific, I'm, I'm certainly not aware, I would think it'd be the sheriff or Ray or you're not, and I'm not, so.
So my issue isn't, with that, isn't membership dues to law enforcement organizations, but to non-law enforcement organizations, to me, that would be tantamount to paying for a deputy's membership to a snowmobile club.
I don't agree with that at all.
I know what rotary does, and I know they're important to the community, I just don't believe taxpayers should be paying for individual memberships to a what essentially, essentially is a private organization that isn't open to everybody. And that's my thought about it. It's by invitation. That's not my understanding from my local rotary.
Now, this, we under dues, is that right, one forty-eight twenty?
That would be the line that we, we would go that to, yes.
I think what, I think what's important to, to think about here is that a law enforcement agency doesn't just serve, we serve everybody all across the county, and part of that is to get involved in the community, an organization like the Rotary does all kinds of charitable functions, and that all kinds of people at all levels of income in all categories benefit from, so our philosophy, my philosophy at the Sheriff's Office for the last eight years is that we need to be connected to that, and we need to be part of that, so that we can meld into the, the community. So in my opinion, the, for two hundred and ten dollars, the Sheriff's Office leaves a whole lot of benefits for not just the Sheriff's Office, but the county as a whole and the community as a whole, and I think stuff like that's very important, so I think out of a five-point-three-million-dollar budget, two hundred and ten dollars, it's very well spent.
Then when you pay the dues for these places, it's not for just individuals, it's for the whole.
The majority of the time, I we, we are a member of a lot of different, a lot of them are law enforcement type, you know, I'm a member of the National Sheriff's Association, I'm a member of the, the main chiefs of police association, we have Reconstructionists, there's a National Reconstruction, Accident Reconstruction Officers Association, I mean, there's a long list, but not all, I mean, we're, I'm a member of Triad, that, that doesn't, you don't pay dues Triad, but I make, you know, we make donations, we do a lot of, we do a lot of supporting, you know, the Waldo County Triad, just like we do, you know, the domestic violence task forces, I mean, there's all, all kinds of, of organizations, community organizations that we would, you know, we don't, we're not members of any snowmobile clubs or four-wheeler clubs as an organization, or we don't pay any of those dues, these are community organizations that benefit, that do charitable good things for all members of this county population. I think it's important.
In this day and age where everybody's against police departments, it's good to see doing something good.
Well, yeah, and, and this is not something new, just in the eight years I've been sheriff, this is stuff that this Sheriff's Office has done for many, many years.
Any other questions, comments from the committee? Big none, offer a vote, Penny.
I.
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 I want to make sure we go over.
Alright, moving along, Department ten thirty-six, regional communication dispatch. Entertainer motion.
Make a motion to accept Department ten seventy-six, maybe dispatch in the amount of one million one hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and seventy dollars.
Seconded by Elaine, any discussion? Yes, thank.
So hot topic of the week on social media side was the purchase of a vehicle for the communications center. And I don't remember seeing that in a budget previously, do you?
What was the vehicle?
It was a Toyota Tacoma that is used by the communications center director as a daily as a daily driver and is used also to check the towers.
Well, that, that would have been from the previous budget.
Yeah, I don't, but I don't remember it being in the previous budget.
Sorry, any further questions?
Yes. Questions?
Thank you for asking, Penny, no, actually, it wasn't in the budget, we had never had a vehicle in the communications budget, which is, I guess, foolish on our part. In the past, our former director, Owen Smith, who's here, thank you for coming on, would either have to utilize one of our county vehicles if we had a spare, or one of the Sheriff's Department vehicles if we had a spare. As crazy as it sounds, we learned a lot in COVID that we can even buy a vehicle, quite frankly, we bought a Toyota Tacoma because one, they have good resale value, they're a good vehicle, and it was the most inexpensive one we could find at the time, we sent Mike all over everywhere, guys, he said to look for new tower sites, we had issues with towers, and, and they need something reliable, and quite frankly, the sheriff hasn't had any spares of his own, and facility vehicles are, are used also, so. But it is used day to day to go to and from, you know, work and, and the tower sites locations and and meetings, we're taking some of the arco ones, and I'm sure you're well aware of, to update all of our communications.
That, that I'm aware of.
So therefore, we, we have this, our director going over everywhere, and this is, this is big equipment, thank you.
So it was covered by the arco ones?
The vehicle came out of one of our reserves.
One of your reserves.
That's why this is the first time we'll see in there any cost to many teams.
How often would you say he needs to drive out to power sites or?
If I may, I'd ask you to ask the director, let her be who's here.
So as of current, I've been visiting tower sites, like today, I went to, like, look out because we were finishing up up there, and I went to the Rock Road Tower, I've been visiting tower sites with the new project two to three times a day. Before we started this project, we were having radio issues, so I was probably visiting tower sites once a week to fix problems. And going forward, I don't know, you shouldn't have any problem with the new radio system, but still, we got to go test generators and stuff like that.
Did the EMA department take care of the towers previously?
Maybe, and the department, I believe, took care of the towers that were pretty to them, correct?
No.
Thank you.
So they, the comms center and, you may don't share towers, is that correct?
Not in all the locations, I believe, Mike.
No, we share A-Born, we share Liberty right now, and that's about it.
So I have to tell you, and I don't know if you're on that social media site, but I will be in trouble if I don't ask this. Because there was a concern that it was seen out of the, out of the county on.
Oh, I read the post, I know exactly what you're talking about.
I don't want to throw you under the bus.
No, you're perfectly fine, no. My, my personal card was, did break down, I used it for a couple of days, and quite frankly, I put my own fuel into it, because I did use it for personal use.
We were aware of that.
Yeah, and you can't, you can't defend yourself, as I've learned on those sites, because then it just gets more.
No, I read the whole thing and just stayed away.
Thank you for canceling that, I appreciate it.
And, you know, it's like, the, it's fully marked, I had the option, you know, I could have put magnets on it, which could have been removed, and I chose to have it fully lettered, so people knew when I was out of the boat, and it gets used to come to work, to go home, you know, you may see it at the store, because I'm on my way home for work and stop.
That makes sense.
But that's the extent of it. Yep.
Thank you.
Nice, any further questions? Seeing none, offer a vote, Penny.
I.
Oh, I.
I.
Yes, motion passed. Moving on to Department ten eighty, advertising and promotion.
Make a motion that on the count of ten eighty and one minute. on account ten eighty, and I'm making a motion ten thousand dollars for the year twenty twenty-three.
Motion by Elaine, seconded by Tim. Any discussion?
Do we do these individually?
No.
No?
You're getting when you.
We did, well, we threw them.
Yeah.
But now we're just, well, we're just, okay.
So I guess I must wanted to make an amendment.
I don't.
Who wants to write?
Okay.
All right, well, any discussion, we can go away. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Penny?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye. Nice.
Okay, I vote yes. Motion passes. Moving along to Department ten ninety audit.
And make a motion that we accept the budget of eight thousand five hundred dollars for Department ten ninety audit for twenty twenty-three.
Seconded.
Motion moved by Bob, seconded by Elaine. Any discussion?
Um, how's, the, the last time I was here, we, we were having, you have, had not received your audit yet? And is that?
We still haven't. Still haven't. You got yours? We, we really haven't.
They haven't, they're still.
No, yeah.
They have the same problems everybody else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Penny?
Aye.
Aye.
Elaine?
Aye.
Tom?
Linda?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes. Um, let's move along to Department ten ninety-five debt service. Here on this list, so, let's put a number on it. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, for zero dollars for debt service.
I'll second that.
Motion would move by any second by Elaine. Any discussion? None, I'll call for a vote. Penny?
Aye.
Aye.
Elaine?
Aye.
Tom?
Yes.
Linda?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes. All right, let's move on to Department two thousand interest.
I made a motion that we pay nineteen thousand dollars on account two thousand interest for the year twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Motion moved by Elaine, seconded by Tim. Any discussion?
Just happy to meet you now.
Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Penny?
Aye.
Uh, aye.
Elaine?
Aye.
Tom?
Yes.
Linda?
Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes. Moving along, Department two thousand five, University of Maine Extension.
Motion to approve, I'm, to approve the Department two thousand, two thousand five, you're going to extensions in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion move by Tammy, seconded by Bob. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Tim?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tom?
Yeah.
Elaine?
Yes.
Uh, aye.
Aye.
I vote yes. Keep it interesting.
Keep it something.
Yes.
All right, Department, uh, twenty twenty-five employees' benefits.
We make a motion that on account twenty twenty-five employee benefits, we approve one million eight hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars for the year twenty twenty-three.
Motion move by Elaine, seconded by Tom. Any discussion?
I have a question. Is the severance and assistance in the employee benefits number?
No.
What would that be under the severance and assistance?
Severance would be under its own reserve account, which I have in front of me.
Okay.
Label severance.
I'm looking at the strap, the things that we're voting on. So it's not hard enough. Yeah. Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Any further discussion?
Include your employees' benefits in your budget and.
Yeah.
Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Penny?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Elaine?
Yes.
Tom?
Linda?
Yes.
Penny?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Motion passes. Moving along to Department twenty thirty-five, Waldo County Soil and Water.
Make a motion to approve um, Department twenty thirty-five, Waldo County Soil and Water, in the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars.
One second then.
Motion move by Penny, seconded by Elaine. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Penny?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Bob? Aye.
Penny?
Aye.
I vote yes. Motion passes. Moving along to Department twenty forty records preservation.
And make a motion that, uh, the budget of four thousand dollars would be for Department twenty forty record preservation for twenty twenty-three.
One second then.
Motion move by Bob, seconded by Elaine. Any discussion?
Seeing that the, um, has brought more than fifty percent from uh, what was budgeted for last year, does that mean that most of the records are now observed?
No, it means that we've started getting things shifted. We have to purchase some equipment, because the computer was ancient, that has been accession list in there and all of that. And so the equipment has been, this doesn't actually work, but the total expenditures is almost it's almost great at this point, but that, that's good. We've got shelving, so we're set that way. We should be, that's why it was reduced this year. We, we should be needless much, or looking to microphone, oh, in twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Right up with nineteen.
In the law.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Penny?
Aye.
Aye.
Elaine?
Aye.
Yeah. I vote yes. Motion passes. Uh, Department twenty forty-five reserves. Entertaining a motion.
Motion to approve Department twenty forty-five reserves in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Seconded.
Motion move by Tammy, seconded by Elaine. Any discussion? Yes. Uh, you know, further discussion, call for a vote. Penny?
Aye.
Bob? Aye.
Elaine?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tim? I vote yes. Motion passes. Department twenty fifty grant writing. I will entertain a motion.
And make a motion for, uh, Department twenty fifty grant writing, zero dollars for twenty twenty-three.
Motion move by Elaine, seconded by Tammy. Any discussion?
I have a question for the commissioners. Is that something that we have to have in there? I know it was something that the DA approached just about like three years ago.
Yeah, actually, years ago.
Yeah, it was.
Well, you spoke.
It should be years ago, yeah.
We actually did have it highly funded. It was like twenty-five, thirty thousand, and then somebody committed for it. But, uh, over time, and as you can see, at the reserves and getting there, I mean, we tried to, 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 you know, to do that, I believe, the Sheriff's Department is you know, successful in securing the grant, but it, they're the grant writer.
So it makes sense to leave it in the month.
Well, we just leave it in this.
Okay, save us space.
Like Dale Lawland, right, small.
Yeah.
I'll see if people that know how to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Great. No further discussion, I'll entertain, uh, all right, I'll call for a vote. Penny?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes. So now, uh, I will entertain a motion for the, uh, total county budget, not including the jail budget.
I'll make a motion to accept total county budget of seven million, two hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars and zero cents.
Motion move by Penny, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. Penny?
Aye.
Bob? Aye.
Elaine?
Aye.
Um, Linda?
Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, I will entertain a motion on the jail budget.
I'll make a motion that we accept the jail budget, three million, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and zero cents.
Motion move by Penny, seconded by Elaine. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Tim?
Linda?
Yes.
Um, it's Elaine?
Yes.
Uh.
Penny?
Aye.
I vote yes. And finally, uh, we have the grand total. I will entertain a motion for this number.
I'll make a motion, grand total, Waldo County budget, ten million, four hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred thirty dollars and zero cents.
Seconded.
Motion move by Penny, seconded by Elaine. Any discussion? This is your last chance to comment on the proposed point twenty-three. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Penny?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Elaine?
Aye.
Linda? And I vote yes. Motion passes. We have, and, pass the vote. Any, any closing thoughts from the committee? And our work on this budget?
I think I stated once before that with the tax stabilization program, um, and this budget alone is going to increase communities' annual taxes by close to fifteen thousand dollars. And at some point, it's gonna have to be made up for, and, you know, we're already running a, um, a, um.
Big sale?
Yeah, pretty much. Um, to, to pay a bill, so it's, it's hard to, to make up for, you know. Um, it, it, it's, it's not as bad if you're gonna make up a couple of thousands, but when you start looking at fifteen thousand for, um, you know, small municipalities, that's, we either have to raise taxes on people, or we have to cut something, or we have to cut something else out. And I, at this point, I don't know what else we can, we can cut out. And then when you add the tax stabilization program on top of that, which is not going to be fully funded, it looks like, by the state, that's gonna put the onus on people under sixty-five to to make up the difference.
Didn't see that coming, did you?
That's my statement about that.
Well, I just wanna say it's been a pleasure serving on this committee and, uh, being the chair the last few years. I am moving to Rockford, and so I will no longer be able to serve on this, uh, committee or the political board selection. Um, but, uh, I really enjoy the work that we, that we've done here, so.
Yes.
It's been a pleasure, actually. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does a good job, girl.
Thank you.
Very much. So hopefully, one of you is, is already eyeing, uh, the chairperson position right here.
Why you didn't nominate it?
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion move by Bob, seconded by Tim. Any? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hey.
Well done.
Well done.
You're adjourned.
Thank you.